All right, I'll call this meeting to order of the Ellisville Town Council. Virtual meeting on Monday, May 11, 2020. Roll call. And sorry, Sandy's on the phone. Guess we should have waited for her.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
William Ellis. Trevor Sager.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Okay, the other two should be joining us shortly. Sandy, did you get any information?
She is struggling. Last time it was on the calendar and it wasn't this time, so I. She has the meeting number. She's trying to get in.
Okay, well, we'll just move along. I'd entertain a motion to pay council payable vouchers and payroll.
I'm moved.
Second. All those are, well, I guess we got a roll call. Any council comment on that? Seen none, any public comment? Sandy roll call.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Kind of stalling a little bit here. Before we get to the resolution.
Well, we have to do the council payable still.
No, I did council payable and payroll together. Is that all right?
I would prefer you do the other separate. That first one just for the minutes. Did you do the minutes or the?
No, I did accounts payable and payroll. I skipped the minutes, you're right.
Okay.
It looks like, it looks like we got William joining in here. Dan, give him a second.
Okay.
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I don't know why I don't have video, but we'll worry about that.
All right. All right, I'd entertain a motion for the approval of the regular, or the minutes for the regular meeting on April 27, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any council comment? Any public comment? Sandy roll call.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, did you want me to separate accounts payable and payroll, or is that okay?
No, those, they're okay. We've got that one taken care of.
Okay.
I'm here.
All right.
Pam's here.
All right.
I'm here.
Okay. All right, Pam, we just did roll call and accounts payable and minutes, so we're moving to resolution 12, 2020. Temporary loan from the rainy day fund to the parks and rec fund. Sandy?
Yes, the, there was an expense on the trail. And we had, we had plenty of appropriation. But unfortunately, the park was not fully funded for that appropriation yet until we get our tax payout. So in order to pay that bill, I need to do a temporary loan from the rainy day fund until we get our tax payment. And then I'll pay the rainy day fund back. And all will be well again.
How much was that for?
The, the bill or the loan?
The loan.
The loan's for $5,000.
All right, is there a motion to approve resolution 12, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
I'll say.
Okay, any council comment on this? Seen none, any public comment? Sandy roll call.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, resolution 13 dash 2020, transfer of funds. Sandy?
Okay, last year we talked about upgrading our emails to Office 365 email. And that is at additional cost that we did not budget for. And when we decided to do this at a supervisor's meeting, it was discussed that we would use some extra money in the town manager's salary. So that $4,200 will cover the emails for the police. You know, the fire department and the general man, general and the police when they go on this, the police are still using their own. And then the also for the donation to the food bank last week, last meeting, I'd like to move an extra 2,500 out of the town manager's salary line into the promotion of town business line. And then in the motor vehicle highway, the $180 is also to cover their email. We're just taking it out of the telephone line and moving it in to email services.
Okay, is there a motion or resolution 13 dash 2020?
I'd move we approve resolution 13 dash 20. Is that it, Dan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
2020. Is there a second?
Second that.
Okay, any council comment? Sandy, what, what'd you say the total amount of the money moved was?
4,200 for the email, 2,500 for the promotion of town business. That's in the general fund and then $180 in motor vehicle highway.
Okay.
And that money stays within the budget in the same budget account. It's just moving it from personal services down to where we can use it for from person, it's moving it from personnel to services, sorry.
Okay. Any further council comments on that?
Just a question, Sandy, do, does our email change or is that a different thing?
Your email already has.
Okay.
If you're using the ellisville.in.us.
Well, we'll have to talk about that because my other one wouldn't work, but probably on the Gmail system it will.
And I, my advice is see Kevin.
Okay. Any further comment? Any public comment? Sandy roll call.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, no ordinance on first reading, ordinance is on second reading. Ordinance 2020 dash 15 to replace section 150 of the Ellisville Town Code regarding building department, building commissioner and building codes. Is this Kevin?
Yes, it is. Yeah, I mean, this basically is just the ordinance that would allow the building department to be run out of the town instead of through the county. It followed the state model. It's been pre-approved by the state to go forward. And after council adopts this ordinance, it would have to go back to the state for final adoption. Assuming all that happens, we're looking at a start date of July 1st for the building department.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion for ordinance 2020 dash 15.
I'll make a motion for ordinance dash 2020 dash 15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I didn't hear the motion. I assuming, I assuming he was making a motion to pass ordinance 2020 dash 15.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, he cut out, so I didn't hear, so.
Yeah, I couldn't hear him either, so I just heard pieces. Any council comment on this? Kevin, you said this will take place July 1st?
Yeah, the idea gives us a little bit of time to get everything set up and make sure we're ready to go, which we should be. Also, I'm not really sure how long it'll take the state to give us back our final approval, even though they've already given us preapproval, which took four months.
Okay, and Monroe County is aware of this, right?
Yes.
I thought I asked you that before, but just making sure. Any further council comment?
Could I clarify who seconded that motion, please?
Hi, Dan.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seen none, Sandy roll call.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis. William Ellis.
Think we lost him.
He's moving around.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis, can you hear me?
William, unmute your mic.
I did.
Okay, I can hear, yes. What was your vote on that motion, please?
The vote would be yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, under old business, purchase of 104 West Vine Street. Darla, do you have comment on this?
I do. We received the report from Vet Environmental Engineering today at about 1:30 or 2 o'clock with regard to the Phase 1 for 104 West Vine. And I sent the link to the town council members so that you could retrieve the report. And as you are aware, it's about 143 pages. Most of that's photographs and exhibits, but nevertheless, it's 143 pages. And so my suggestion after talking to the town manager would be that the town council table this and attempt, make every attempt to schedule an executive session on Thursday to discuss this in more detail as opposed to discussing it now. That would give the council time to review the report and kind of think about our options.
Okay, any council comment on that? If not, I move for.
I fully support it. I think we, I think that is the best course of action at this juncture.
Do you want to make the motion?
Yes, I will. I'll make a motion to table this to an emergency session. Can we go ahead and say Thursday?
That's fine.
It wouldn't be an emergency session, it'd be an executive.
Executive, sorry, you're very good. Executive session, which will be Thursday, the 14th?
Yes.
At what time?
6:30.
It's fine.
It's at 6:30.
Are we going to have it on Zoom or in person?
I'm, either way, I'm fine with.
I think we can accommodate social distancing in the big meeting room if you want to hold it in person.
6:30 is good for me.
In person's fine for me, too.
Okay, but either way. All right, there's a motion. Someone second the motion.
Second.
Okay. Pam, are you okay with 6:30 on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good with it, too. So Sandy roll call.
Who did the second?
I did.
That was Scott?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry. If I'm not looking at the screen, I can't quite, Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, down to new business, plans and procedure to reopen the talent services and facilities of Ellisville. Who wants to take this?
Well, I've got a couple of different things. I don't know if you'll make it now or you'll wait on it, but I think it's a little, shall we say, premature to talk until we have some type of idea what Board of Health is going to do.
And I would also agree with that. I think their one deadline was May 16th. Is that correct, Darla?
Um, I thought it was a little bit later than that, but hang on here. May 15th.
15th.
At midnight or?
At midnight, from what I understand, 11th.
11:59 PM.
I guess what I would suggest to each of you or suggest to the councils whole is we have very professional directors of each part departments and a very professional town manager. This is one we probably ought to stay out, let them roll the town back out as they feel appropriate and needed.
Okay, the only thing that I would like is someone else talking, I'm sorry. Okay, I guess it's me feeding back. The only thing I would add to that, there will probably be another meeting that I would be involved with on Thursday. So if they decide to go ahead and open, I mean, are we just going to mirror whatever they say and go with that? There's no other restrictions? Or are you kind of saying, Scott, to leave it up to our supervisors on how they want to?
I think we leave it up to the town manager and the various supervisors. I think they know better than what we do as to what needs to open and what order. And this is one of the times where I think the council can probably help best by staying out of it.
Dan, could I speak? It's Michael Farmer.
Sure, Michael.
Okay, well, I knew this was going to come up. I would point out a couple of things. Our field crews, street and utilities, they're working at about 75% capacity now. Today, we had a main break and we were having to put some services in. We had meter reader in, we had some locates we had to do. So we had most of our crews in today. This has been going on for a couple of weeks. Street department, same thing's been going on and luckily, and as usual, actually, most of the work we can work safely. We've been driving two vehicles when we used to drive one. And a lot of the field work just allows us to work at a safe distance from each other. So we are already at a pace to be close to full employment or full workforce every day anyway. So with the offices, two out of the three people in the billing office have been showing up almost every day. We have had reduced hours, but today we could have used all three people. But what, but the way the offices are set up for both the clerk and the utilities offices, we have a glassed in area for one person to work and a person that works out in the front lobby, if you will. And so we're almost working at full capacity in our offices as well. So when the transition comes, it will not be that noticeable to most of us working in those arenas.
I think the big decision for, that I, my concern is when do we open the town hall back up?
Yeah, I was thinking that as well, and I'm thinking even when everything's lifted for a time, I think the safe thing to do would be open up the lobby, work out some procedures for who can be in there at the same time, not open the entire town hall to the public. Designate from each department, one person, probably the department head that could enter the town hall when needed. And then that way, the multi-touches from all the departments into the town hall won't jeopardize our workforce inside. So I think we can keep it pretty stringent about how we utilize the town hall for public and, and department use and, and work safely, if you will. I even thought that as the weather gets better, the first couple of meetings when we attend, if we don't want to be in the meeting room, we could set up, we've got two 16 by 32 tents. Could actually have the meetings outside, weather permitting.
I, I think that would be hard. It sounds really nice, but I think it would have its own technical difficulties as far as people hearing you speak. And I don't think cats would be able to tape it out there, but we can definitely spread the council out to the side tables and supervisors can sit in the audience and we can, you know, spread the chairs out so that we can maintain six feet dis, distancing inside the building.
Well, that's fine. You can, we can do it either way, but I'm thinking with safety as the master right now, that if we go outside and it's not as nice as being inside, then maybe that would be preferable. It's good to have options. I don't care either way.
Well, we just get the town back open first and then we'll worry about what we do at the next meeting later.
Right.
I would like to speak some reasoning from county health before they decide, if they decide to keep going with the lockdown, some numbers as opposed to just an order. I would appreciate that from a town perspective that we be clued in on what the numbers are or not, rather than just kind of reading it in the paper or hearing it when everybody else does.
I can contact Margie Rice if you want and ask.
Thanks.
That'd be great.
Can you guys hear me clearly now?
Pardon me?
Can you guys hear me clearly now?
Yes.
Okay, basically what I was just going to say is the public, for the public, that we, this isn't in our control. The executive order from the governor, has that, has that already been explained?
No, I mean, the executive order from the governor and then the order from the health department, the Bloomington Health Department are two different things. And Darla, maybe you should.
Thing, they are two different things, but the executive order from what Darla said earlier today from the governor pretty much gives this, this ability to make it more strict to the county health department. We don't have any say so in this. We have to go by what their direction is.
Correct, and William, you're really breaking up, so. I apologize, but. Yeah, we're not hearing you clear.
Okay.
I, I got most of it.
I think he's wanting to let people know out there this question in us that we don't have no control if the health department, it tells us that we have to shut down, that we can't override them.
Correct.
Is that correct, Darla?
I think that's correct, and the statute that I sent around earlier today is Indiana Code 16 dash 41 dash 9 dash 1.6, which discusses the public health authorities' powers under this type of situation. And then we also have the governor's executive order 2026, which goes through what the governor is suggesting as far as a path for reopening the, the state of Indiana. But the governor says in his order that the State Department of Health, which is not the local department of health, but the State Department of Health has authority to take additional measures. The governor wants each county to do a county by county assessment with regard to the impact of COVID-19 on each particular county. And then the governor also makes it clear in his order under paragraph 7H that nothing in the executive order prevents, prevents the local health department from issuing and enforcing isolation and quarantine orders. So there's a number of different statutes to look at, but the primary one is the one I just cited, which basically gives, I think, the local health authority, the authority to do what it did on May 1st.
That's pretty much what I, thank you, Darla. That's what I was hoping you would explain for the public. Thank you, Pam. Hopefully you guys can hear me now.
Yeah, we're hearing you a lot better.
I had to go outside.
I see that.
I'm only downtown Ellisville.
Do you have anything else, Alice, you'd like to add to that? Well, we lost him. Any other council member want to add anything to the opening of the town?
I've got some follow-up after we get done with, with this specific thing, though.
Okay. So just to be clear, we're all on board. Scott, you want to see some numbers? If we do, are involved in another meeting. Me and Darla was involved in the last one, and I think the there was a little confusion that Ellisville went along with everything. We were just at the meeting is all we were at, so.
Well, I think for clarity, Dan, it's, it's not that, and I don't want to speak for the rest of you, but it's not that I didn't support what the health department did the last time. But I think, again, city, county and Ellisville were, wanted a better word, are co-equal in the government of our own various bodies. And we need to be kept informed as to why another body is going to do something as opposed to simply reading about it when everyone else does, because our constituents have questions that, quite frankly, we couldn't answer. And I think we need to be able to answer those questions. This is, I think, you know, the mayor clearly needed to be able to answer them. County commissioners need to be answering when we were kind of left on the outside. And I just think it's important that we have a communications with, you know, our, our, our co-equals at the other various branches of government.
Yeah, I, I agree with you 100% Scott, and I will be more vigilant. And Darla, you said you were going to contact Margie.
I can do that.
Okay, and I think that will help a lot.
Like I said, I agreed with 100% with what they did. Maybe didn't like the path they chose, but that is what it is, and I'm sure it's, it's something new and unusual, we've never done it. But if we're going to do it again, I know all of us have had questions from our constituents and we're going to need to be able to answer them.
I agree. I've been questioned several times, so, especially when the article came out in the paper. So, all right, anyone else? Okay, Darla, you don't need any kind of motion or anything, do you?
No, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, that was a no?
No.
Okay.
Dan, are you ready for the second part of this?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Okay, we've had, and several of us have discussed this, we've had a number of our employees, I think, and Sandy, correct me, for the last six or seven weeks, who we asked to stay at home and we asked to work from home in the interest of safety. Unfortunately, for all of our employees, that wasn't possible. We had fire, we had street, we had police, we had utilities that had to come in and various other entities, portions of the town had to come in, had to report. And those folks, along with their families, and we've got to remember the families, have had to deal with the very real possibility of being exposed to COVID. Now, any of us could be exposed, but particularly with the groups that we've mentioned, they're having to go into people's homes. They're having to make emergency runs, emergency repairs, things like that. And while I don't think the town's necessarily in a position to offer hazard pay, as it were, I do think we're in a position to offer hazard compensation to some of these folks. Basically, as a reward for making sure everything continued to function and continued to move forward. And quite frankly, I don't think COVID is something on anyone's mind when they sign up to take these jobs, that this was going to be a very real threat. So what I'd like to propose to the council is that we award for those employees who have not been able to work from home or distance working, a 48-hour PTO bonus. Like it to be in a separate bank, so more of a COVID bonus to those folks, again, police, fire, utilities, those folks who are working their normal work week, as it were, and couldn't take time off or couldn't work from home. Along with that, there are people who had to come in. And what I would suggest there is that we create a percentage basis for those folks who had to endure the similar risks based upon, for instance, if your normal work week is 40 hours and you had to work two days or 16 hours of that 40 hours, you've worked 40% of your week. So I would suggest we award them 40% of that 40 hours. And then likewise, we have to remember that both police and fire have got part-time employees that help with the workforce. They take the, take the place of full-time equivalents. And I would like to use the, basically what I laid out for you guys in the email, a percentage basis for them so that they get some compensation as well. And I know we don't normally do that with part-time employees, but this is a very different situation than what we've ever been in before. And even though they're part-time employees, they're taking the spots of full-time employees because we can't afford a full-time employee. So they're really doing yeoman's service there, and quite frankly, I think they need to be rewarded just as much as everyone else does. So I laid it out for you guys in the email and Sandy, I'll forward it to you, but I think those folks who are working, you know, whatever percentage of a full-time week, they should get that percentage of that 48 hours. And we'll average it over two weeks, of course, and I'll let Mike Farmer and the various department heads work out who gets what percentage or whatever else. But I really think we need to, to, to make hazard compensation to these folks because they've really, really gone above and beyond the call because a lot of them could have started calling sick and none of them did. They kept on coming on. They kept on every day, making the runs, making the calls, making the repairs. And I just think our employees are some of the lowest paid in the county and we need to reward them for their continued loyalty. I'll piggyback on top, I'll piggyback on top of that, Scott, if you don't mind, Dan.
Sure, go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, on top of that, um, just a huge thank you to, to our first responders and essential employees uh, here in Ellisville. Hopefully we can get this through, uh, get you guys some paid time off, um, as a small token of our appreciation for your hard work. Uh, your work does not go unnoticed and unappreciated. Hopefully you can use this little bit of time to spend some quality time with family and friends. Um, and lastly, from the bottom of our heart, thank you.
I, I'd like to piggyback on both of you guys. I, I totally agree. Um, a lot of companies and a lot of businesses are doing the same thing. And I, I think it's great that we can offer something like this in a, uh, small town Ellisville that we can compensate our employees and, and just show them how much we do appreciate them. Darla, the only thing I would ask is, um, and I'll, I'll let you talk here a second.
Okay.
Is there anything that, um, would prohibit us doing this sort of thing? That you know of, Darla?
Not that I know of right now. Um, I would like to look into it and I think it would be appropriate, if you want to do this, to draft a resolution which sort of memorializes this.
I, I think that's the best way to go about it because there's gonna be some intricacies that are getting pretty complicated here. Uh, if we try and just put them all in a motion then for Sandy to have to break them back apart. Um, love to help you with, uh, with a resolution, but I think, you know, as a joint show, I'd like to at least put it before the council tonight that we're agreeing to do this in some form, unless you find it's illegal for us to do that.
Well, uh, I'll let William, go ahead, William.
First of all, before I say anything, am I clear yet?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, just pretty much want to echo what everybody else has said. I want to thank all of the people for keeping Ellisville running. Um, everyone's essential. And I think it's crucial that those have been called in. I haven't heard complaints from, I really haven't. None of the employees are asking for this. And they deserve it. And that makes it me even more willing to support this fully because this isn't a situation where we have people threatening to quit or anything. They're doing their job, they're doing it without complaining. And I think that needs to be rewarded more than it usually is. And I thank Scott for bringing this out.
Thank you, William. Pam, would you like to add something?
I disagree with all of you. I thank everyone for their hard work always and then doing it during this time.
Okay, thank you. So Darla, I think we're all in agreeance. We, we would like to see this. Do you want to work on a resolution? And bring it to us?
I will come up with something.
Okay. Um, is there any further discussion on this, I guess, from the supervisors? Okay, so you don't need any kind of resolution, right? Or, or any kind of motion right now?
No, I'll draft the resolution for the next meeting.
Okay, great.
There's a prob, no. Meaning if I, there's some issue with the town council being able to pass this resolution, I will let you know.
Okay, I appreciate it. And i- it's an awesome ideal, Scott. I, I've been thinking somehow to do the same thing. And I'm glad you came up with it first, so.
Appreciate you guys being on board with it. It's, uh, it's quite a feat that our employees pull off every day and then we just continue to heap more problems on them and every time they, they get it passed. So again, thank you to them all the way across the board.
Did you have anything else to add, Scott?
No, not right now.
Okay. All right, um, let's see, we're down to privileged of the floor. Anyone in the audience like to say anything, non-agenda items? If you would raise, use the raise hand function, I'm sorry. Use the raise hand function and I will call out your name and you can speak. And I'll give you guys a couple of minutes to find that.
I think Jennifer has something there, Dan.
Okay, Jennifer?
Hi. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so my name is Jennifer Pearl and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation and we serve all of Monroe County, um, in trying to create, um, jobs for all of our community. Um, and I know Clark Griner's on this call as well. Um, many of you know him. He's been working closely, uh, with Ellisville. We just wanted to give a quick update on the work that we've been doing in COVID nineteen response. Um, we're serving on the, um, Economic Stabilization and Recovery Working Group, um, that includes a lot of partners in Bloomington as well as, um, representatives from the county and, um, city councils. Um, the city of Bloomington had a rapid response fund with loans, um, for local businesses. A second phase of our work has actually been operated through the, um, Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, which might be of use to you all as you're looking to reopen. Um, the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce has been running an online, um, conference essentially to help businesses prepare and employers prepare for reopening, and that's all available on their website. And then our organization, the BEDC, we're starting to look at long-range planning and, um, ways in which we can work with all of our partners. And Ellisville is, you know, a really important piece of that puzzle on what long-term recovery planning looks like economically and how we can also, um, really position our community, not only for coming back, but actually being positioned for the future and, um, kind of, you know, competitively positioned. Um, so I just wanted to float this out there, um, that we look forward to continuing to work with you. Um, I know Clark is on as well. He might be able to say a word or two about our recent survey of employers and some of the work that's been done. Um, if it would be okay to turn it over to him for a moment.
Sure, go ahead, Clark.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Dan. Um, yeah, one of the things that we've done is we've kind of reached out to the area employers, particularly in the traded sectors, and we did a survey. Uh, and we got a lot of those results back here mid-April or so. And I know in COVID timing, that seems like it's forever. But, um, you know, some of the interesting things, and, and most of you guys and, and gals will already know this, but there's been a tremendous impact on sales, supply chain disruptions, uh, decrease, or, you know, uh, workforce reductions, layoffs. Um, and then this repurposing workforce. Employers are out there, are working very hard to try to find ways to do that. And I just heard a way to kind of compensate and work with some of the, the, uh, employees there in the town of Ellisville. But they're continuing to, to look for creative ways to, to kind of continue to get through this. Some of the area businesses and stuff are, are still feeling some of the greatest challenges are some of the uncertainty out of there. Uh, planning for the unexpected, fifty-seven percent of the respondents were saying things like that is, is what, what, what do we expect? And so I think what you're trying to do is take a look at that, listen to what some of the guiding voices are out there, and I think that's really important. And then also, one of the big things that shows compassion of, of the people, not only in the town of Ellisville, but within our county and within our region, is, you know, protecting the customers and their employees. So social distancing is working, it is on the top of mind of people. And I think as long as you continue to, to pay attention to those things and try to, uh, continue to help people run and operate and live their lives safely through, through some of the guidance that we're offering uh, and respecting what, what the Health Department and community is saying out there, I think will continue to do well. Uh, but over half of people, uh, had those concerns from that. The other thing that's a big thing for them right now is cash flow concerns. And that's something on, as you're looking at reopening and the recovery side of it, uh, over half of them had, had concerns on that. So businesses are, are out there right now vulnerable. So there's things that, that as a community, we can start to think about how to help them reopen, uh, how to help them, um, engage their customers, making sure that the community feels safe as well as those businesses feel safe. Those are gonna be some of the big things that we kind of have to continue to pay attention to. So, and I know you guys are very conscientious on that, thinking about your business partners and community out there. And, uh, the BEDC will do what we can to help support that and stuff. And by the way, I, I look kind of woolly because of my razor and so not the normal look for me, but anyhow, it's, it's where we're at. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Clark. I'm in the same boat. Uh, my hair and the beard's kind of going out of control here. It's, uh, about time to get a razor out if we don't get this fixed pretty soon.
Yeah, that, that's right.
I've been telling the people to follow along for years, but no one pays attention to me.
Okay, um, is anyone else in the audience have anything? Seeing none, I, I would also like to make an apology. I completely forgot about the pledge and the prayer at the beginning of the meeting because we had trouble with everything going on. And if Mr. Dernold doesn't mind, um, being this kind of a time and situation we're in, I would really like to do the prayer.
Jimmy?
It'll be fine. Are you ready?
Sure.
Yeah, so can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
By heavenly father, we, uh, come to the conclusion of this meeting. We thank you so much for the conversation we've had. We thank you for the progress we've made. We thank you for all the many fine comments that we received from our, 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 our board. We thank you to continue to lead and guide us and bless us as you receive fit. Be with those ones that are sick and in sorrow, those loved ones. Be with the business managers and the owners that are opening their businesses up this, this week and this month. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jimmy. I just, I really would have hate to forgot about the prayer, so.
That's okay.
All right, um, let's move down to supervisors' comments. Jimmy, since you're on the air, go ahead and start.
I just want to thank you all for your kind comments, our, our, our guys. And, and I've noticed the fire department too. They've been right there. They've taken their calls. You know, not, not hesitated a minute. Uh, we've given them a few little extra guidelines if they can handle some cases over the phone, if at all possible. It's worked out quite well. We've been well-supplied with, uh, uh, gloves and masks and, uh, disinfectants. So we just feel very fortunate that we've been able to get through this eight weeks, uh, starting our ninth week now. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jimmy. Um, let's move down to Mike Farmer.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, a couple of things. I wanted to shout out to, uh, Marty Stevens, our Richland Township trustee. Uh, anybody that lives over, uh, close to Chester Drive and, um, oh, Park Street, if you will, um, uh, notices that Marty's cleaned up that area. Uh, it, it sits in between, it's the old, where the old pool used to be and he put in a parking lot. And he's, uh, did a lot of, uh, landscaping to it and now he's moved across to the street. He's cleaning up the property across the street and he's making it a green space with, uh, lots of landscaping. And it affects about three different neighborhoods in that area. And I, 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 every, a lot of things that Marty does goes unseen and his willingness to be part of Ellisville and make it a better place to live. Um, I, I just think, uh, somebody ought to, uh, thank him for doing that. And if you haven't been down in there and seen some of the improvements, you should go down there. It's how Ellisville will improve in the future a little bit at a time. So shout out to Marty. The other person, uh, Kip and his crews, uh, were out today and they put up banners for all the seniors that are graduating this year. Uh, Dirk Ackerman and some other people in the, uh, uh, school system reached out to us a few weeks ago and we put together a plan to, uh, build some banners, uh, uh, get them printed out. And with Kip and his crew's help, uh, we placed them all along the corridors, both east and west in town. So if you haven't seen them yet, you should go out and check them out. They go both east and west. And I think there's thirty-eight banners and we've got them up today. And so I think it's a good segue into their virtual graduation, which I think is next Saturday. Um, other than that, I think I'm good.
Thanks.
I've got a question real quick, if I can, Mike.
Yes.
Or maybe Jimmy. Um, where are we with the pasture being turned into the dog park? I know we got a grant for that and then council discussed it and where we, where we'd like to see that go. We've had a couple of people ask.
Well, um, there's some work to be done, maybe even with DNR as far as, uh, I assume you mean the Stewart property?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, a- and, and with, um, you know, this kind of, I, I didn't mention work sessions. I put it out in my last weekly update to you guys. And it's one of the subjects that I'd like to talk about is, uh, some of the capital projects we do in the near future. Uh, the Stewart property being one of them and the dog park being included and what we can and can't do. And I think we ought to look at a bigger picture that includes the dog park. I think, uh, Denise reached out to Smithville and they said, you know, take your time doing whatever you need to do. So that's, that's kind of where we're at and, and, and had a work session probably in June because I don't think we're ready to meet for something like that yet. We can talk about that and flood remediation and, uh, some of the other things that, uh, we're looking at.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Mike Corman.
Thank you, Dan. Fire Department is moving right along with the, we're having meetings with the fire chiefs of the county three nights a week via Zoom. So, uh, the reason we do that is to compare notes and responses and it's been most beneficial. Also have a cadre of personal protective equipment that we have listed. Um, and on, on a cloud document that we update periodically. So we all know how much personal protective equipment all of us have in case we get into a bind. So they're working well together. The crews have been coming in, doing their stuff, you know, just like, like they not missed a beat. So I'm really happy with everybody. So we've had some, uh, leadership virtues, uh, come out during this time as well. And like a lot of things, we can only learn from something like this and so far, it's so good. That's all I got.
Dan? Dan?
You're muted.
Uh, sorry, sorry about that.
Dan? Dan? I, I'd mention one more thing, uh, under the, uh, uh, title of good news. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club's wrapping up their, uh, uh, annual Big Hearts campaign. And we think we're gonna meet our, um, objective of raising eighty thousand dollars. So we had a big surge at the end and we're still wrapping up a few loose ends here and there. But, um, everybody in the, uh, community has really come together to make that happen. So I keep mentioning that, that we were having the campaign and I thought it was appropriate to mention that we are nearing our, um, goal of eighty thousand dollars. So it's really big.
Wow, that is awesome. I'm, I'm glad to hear that, so. Um, Kip, are you in or there?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't have nothing.
Okay. Um, Kevin?
Uh, not really a whole lot. Um, one thing I did notice today, I was running through our spreadsheets of permits and we're actually ahead of our pace last year on new driveway permits, which leads to more new houses. So things are going as fast, if not faster than they were last year.
That's great. Anything else, Kevin?
Uh, not that I can think of.
All right, um. Did I miss anyone? I think I got everyone. I'd just like to say one more time, kudos to our town, all of our employees and actually the community itself. Everyone's doing a wonderful job. Um, as things do get and progress, where we're gonna slowly start opening up the town. It would be awesome for everyone just to be smart and stay safe and do things the right way. You know, social distance, keep that in mind. Uh, wear a mask if you feel comfortable wearing them. Uh, wash your hands, everything, just you've heard a million times, just everyone stay safe and we'll get through this. Any council comments? Say, go ahead, Sandy, you're muted.
I would like to ask, when we did our meeting notices, we do have a work session posted for next Monday. Do you want me to send out a cancellation on that work session?
Well, how, how does the council feel about a, a work session this month? Do you think it's too soon or?
Do we need it?
Well, I, I think if we do, um, we're obviously having trouble with, with some Zoom meetings. I think if we have a meeting next week, if, we should try it live. Maybe work session to kind of work the, the, the things out. If, if that is, if the local health department does ease up on the stay-at-home order, um, maybe it would be good just to kind of practice on how we could set town hall up for, uh, future meetings and things like that. But I'm either way, so.
Are we allowed to have a meeting with ten people?
Well, i- if we go to the stage two, I think it's twenty-five people. Is that correct, Darla? Well, i- if we go to the stage two, I think it's 25 people. Is that correct, Darla?
I question that because we are going to have an in-person executive session Thursday, that would be the 14th.
I'm looking at paragraph five of the Public Health Order, and it says public gatherings of more than 50 people are prohibited.
What was that number?
More than 50.
So we're covered.
The Public Health Order does not apply to governmental agencies.
Okay.
Well, par, okay, paragraph three of the Public Health Order does not apply to governmental agencies. So you can, the town can open, I think, if you wanted to, but you still have to maintain the other requirements, for lack of a better word, of the Public Health Order. So you can't have more than 50 people. We still have to socially distance if we can, things of that nature.
How does the council feel? I don't think it'd be a bad idea necessarily to have a work session because I think there's a good potential that we could see another round of stimulus for shovel-ready projects. You know, Mike and I have talked about this before. It's probably something we need to talk about sooner rather than later so that we're at the forefront of it if, in fact, those are out there. Trevor?
Yeah, I'm good with Monday. I've already got it on the schedule, was planning on it, so.
Okay, William?
Monday's good.
Okay, Pam?
Yeah, I can be there.
Okay, so Monday, Sandy, if you could go ahead and post the work session, we'll try it there.
It's already posted in the annual meetings.
Okay, but we will, it will be a live meeting and not a virtual, so.
Yes, that, when it's virtual, I post that it is. So if I don't post, I think I should be covered that it's not virtual, right, Darla?
Say that again, okay?
Okay, in the annual meeting notice, it says that we'll meet at town hall for the work sessions every third Monday. So I wasn't planning on reposting that unless it was canceled. And so since it's not a virtual meeting, will that require any more notice?
Well, don't you usually do a 48-hour notice for your work sessions?
No. I don't think so.
Um.
I will, though, if, if you want me.
Yeah, I think you should.
Okay. Well, I, I'll just post both the executive session and the work session then tomorrow, and that they will be held at town hall in person.
Hey, Sandy, quick question. William, you, you need to weigh in here if you could. You and I talked about making Zoom a regular part of every meeting for people who can't otherwise watch it. Do you want to try that with this?
That's, I would love to. That's what I was going to suggest. I had my, the hand up there for that. I can't take credit for that idea. David Askins, who's online from the B-Square Beacon, one of our guests today, he would love it if the public could still, and I fully agree, could attend meetings via Zoom even when we're live and in person. Is there anything against that, Darla?
Uh, there may be. So I'll need to look at that for you.
Okay.
Even for just viewing, Darla, as opposed to comments?
I'll have to look at it. There is a provision under the Indiana Code, I think, that allows you to develop some policies with regard to remote participation. But the town doesn't have any, so that may require you to develop a policy, but I'll look at that for you.
Thank you. I, I think that would be crucial because we've had pretty good participation through Zoom and the people that normally can't participate. And that's what, yeah, I'd love the feedback.
And especially in planning and zoning meetings. I know you're not talking about planning and zoning right now, but I think there's a requirement that if someone or a group of people want to contest a planning and zoning decision, there's a requirement under the Indiana Code, they appear at the meeting, sign in, and make a statement. So I, and again, I know you're not talking about that type of a meeting, but I'll have to look at the requirements for participation and see what kind of policy the town needs to come up with.
And then I would ask the question, how would we accommodate a Zoom meeting at town hall? Would everyone bring their personal devices and use it just like?
I mean, we would, the town, I guess, would be broadcast, but if somebody chimes in, we've got some monitors in the town hall that we could see it over.
Okay, and I, I can see where we could, you know, get someone to volunteer to kind of keep an eye on that if we can do it. And just for clarification too, Darla, while you're checking into it, because I've always wondered about this, too. Let's say I'm on vacation or something, and I wanted to call in and be part of a virtual meeting as part of the live meeting, too. So maybe check into that also.
Typically, you can't, you're required to be at the meeting in person.
Okay, so there's no calling in? Okay.
Not that I know of. I mean, other than what the public access counselor is allowing us to do now because of COVID-19, typically the town councilors have to be in person at the meeting.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that expires on June the 4th.
Yes, I think that's true.
All right. Any other comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved. Is there a second?
One second.
Sandy Rocco?
Scott, or Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pam Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night, all.